...nation, under God, indivisible, with earthy and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Abbott. Commissioner Selberg. Commissioner Buck. Commissioners Army. Commissioner Walker.
Here.
Commissioner Jones.
Here.
Commissioner Gabrielson.
Present.
Commissioner Gordon.
Here.
Chairman Flouche.
Here.
Thank you, you have a quorum.
Thank you. Couple of announcements, anyone who has not yet signed in, please do so at the table located in the lobby. Should anyone wish to speak, please complete the request to speak form for any form which is also located in the lobby table, please sign, use the sign-in sheet. A request to speak form must be completed for each item you would like to speak on, including the sub-items. Please note that there are stairs on the right, left, center aisles, and we ask that you use caution when using these stairs. There's also a ramp located at the audience's left. If anyone has any written comments, exhibits, petitions, photos, letters they intend to present at today's meeting, please have seventeen copies and give them to the staff member in the back of the auditorium, she has her hand up. If you do not have seventeen copies, you may use the table with the overhead camera next to the podium to present your documents. If you want your documents to go on record, you must hand them to the clerk after your presentation with the agenda item number clearly marked on the documents. Members of the public cannot speak to the staff members as they're sitting tables with microphones during the meeting. If you have any questions, please see the staff member in the back of the auditorium who can meet you in the lobby and discuss. Timer will be activated and all speakers will be limited to two minutes to make their presentations and statements. Everyone, please turn off your cell phones and pagers, place them on vibrate during the meeting. If you have, if you must receive a phone call, please leave the meeting area and go outside to have your conversation. We also ask the audience to refrain from talking with one another during the presentations and discussion. Today, the planning zoning commission will hear a public testimony and then forward a recommendation to the Board of Supervisors. The item with the recommend, the items with a recommendation made by the commission will be heard by the Board of Supervisors Monday, August 3rd, 2015, at 9:30 a.m. in the same location, with the exception of any continued items. Everyone attending the meeting is asked to remember that administrative building and campus are tobacco-free areas, which means no smoking curb-to-curb. Also, no bottled water is allowed in the auditorium, no food, soda, coffee, etc., is allowed in the auditorium. If we have any items remaining on the agenda, the commission will break for lunch at 1:00 to 2:00. Has everybody had a chance to review the minutes from the last meeting?
Yes.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve.
We have a motion by Commissioner Gordon and a second by Commissioner Buck. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Motion carries. Item number one.
Item number one. Is a request, is an evaluation of a request for a zoning use permit on assessor's parcel number 402-63222 for recreational vehicle park camping and outdoor storage in an AR agricultural residential zone, one-acre minimum lot size, in the Beaver Dam vicinity. Staff recommends approval, subject to conditions. We have also received one letter of concern for this item.
Okay. Is the applicant present? Okay, we have no speakers on the item. Would you like to address the commission?
I don't really have any comments, other than we're happy with the staff recommendations and don't see any issues, other than that.
Okay. Any questions of the speaker? Oh, could you please state your name?
Andrew Christianson.
Thank you. Any questions of the speaker? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to pass this, as long as you follow staff recommendations.
We have a motion by Commissioner Gabrielson and a second by Commissioner Buck. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye. Aye. Aye.
Those opposed, same sign, motion carries. There you go. Item number two.
Item number two is an evaluation of a request to rescind and cause the property to revert from a CM to a commercial manufacturing two-acre minimum lot-size zone to the previous zone of AR agricultural residential one-acre minimum lot-size for failure to meet the conditions of approval as specified in BOS Resolution Number 2014-45, which conditionally approved the rezone of assessor's parcel number 404-24044 in the Kanebentz vicinity. Staff recommends that BOS Resolution Number 2014-45 be rescinded and the zoning revert to AR agricultural residential one-acre minimum lot-size zone.
Okay. Is the applicant present? County?
We're not present.
Okay. That's good, thank you. Well, wait a few more items. All right, we have, the applicant is not here, the, the request is actually from Mojave County to revert back. Any questions or comments to the staff? I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Make a recommendation that we approve the, is it dissolution or the reversion?
Reversion.
Reversion of Board Resolution 2014-045.
Second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Buck and a second by Commissioner Gordon. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Those opposed, same sign, motion carries. Item number three.
Item number three is an evaluation of a request for a rezone of assessor's parcel number 306-4116G from an AR to a agricultural residential two-acre minimum lot-size to an AR agricultural residential one-acre minimum lot-size to allow creation of two residential parcels in the Golden Valley vicinity. There's one correction to the staff report, the Fernandez's are from Garden Grove and their Ortiz's are from Temecula. I did get a call from one of the owners, Bonetta Fernandez, she said she couldn't make it to the meeting. Staff recommends approval, subject to conditions.
Is the applicant present? The applicant is not present, we have one speaker, Michael Brown.
Good morning.
Good morning, please state your name.
Michael E. Brown. I own the property at 889 Derby, South Derby Circle, which is, in essence, one two-acre lot away from the parcel under consideration. My brother and I bought two adjoining parcels there on Derby Circle. We were looking at retirement and we wanted to live next door to each other, but we didn't want to live too close. We wanted a little bit elbow room, and that's what attracted us to these two lots, was the fact that they were two-acre lots each, giving us four acres. And now this comes before, the problem with spot zoning is that once you do it, it seems to be a continuing thing. If, if you looked, you would find that an adjacent parcel to us, owned by James and Shirley Hedwig out of Coquille, Oregon, was granted a split of this nature, one two-acre lot into two one-acre lots. And now here we are, just down the street from that, and because that split was done, well, then why not this one? And if you grant this one, well, then what about the one across the street? And it totally destroys the neighborhood. Between my brother and I, we've invested a quarter of a million dollars in Golden Valley, not because we thought we were going to make a lot of money, not because we were living in some other state thinking, boy, there's a plum for picking, but because we wanted to live there. And we intend to live there. And I would ask, I would ask this board to consider the other people around there. When I look out my front door, I can look around and see several apparently abandoned properties with rather ramshackle dwellings sitting on them, that there's been no movement to in the time that I've been there. Quite frankly, the mobile home on this property has not had any activity, there's been nobody around there, there's no skirting, the underbelly is blowing in the wind, insulation hanging out. It seems to me that these are not people that cared about that property. And I would ask you to consider our request to deny this petition. Thank you very much.
Any questions of the speaker? I have a question of staff, where's the closest one acre? I can't see it on this map that I got, zoning map, all there are is two acre.
On the parcel map, you can see over here, through the parcel map, and where Derby Circle is, I think, go to your left.
Yeah, one to the southwest, one to the northeast.
There's one to south, yeah.
Mr. Chairman, if you'd look, it's just to the right of.
Are the ARs one acre?
The AR is one acre.
Okay.
And it's just to the right of the previous picture, item three.
Okay, all right.
I also have a question for staff.
Go ahead.
Under this particular case, and I do have to agree with the gentleman, that place has been vacant, there is no skirting, the underneath is hanging out, the property is, you know, it's clean but not de-brushed or maintained. Isn't there something that we can put or into a stipulation if we do this about maintaining that one and bringing it up to code? Because I know that you can't, you know, code is, I mean, they don't, just don't allow you not to have skirting and proper everything underneath the trailer and stuff. Before we, you know, is it, can that be a stipulation inside of this, that they have to bring that up to code?
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, I think it would be appropriate, if you want to add a condition that says that they do have to bring the property up to the requirements of, you know, the building, you know, the building codes and, well, I guess, for us on the manufactured home, it'd be the state requirements.
Okay.
To the level of the state requirements and the zoning ordinance. I, I guess I would be a bit hesitant to go beyond what we've got.
Right.
In rule.
So, I take it there's been no complaints? That you know of?
Not, none that we know of.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Staff, is there, the one picture is kind of hard to tell, does that residence have a certificate of occupancy? Is it permitted, or is it just sitting there? Do we know the status of that currently?
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, I do have our permitting system on my computer, if you'll allow me a moment to do a search.
It's not been occupied. We go down there once a week, it hasn't been occupied in about six years.
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, the department issued a building permit in 2012 for a 14-by-52 manufactured home and power pole. The permit is closed, which meant basically all of our responsibilities regarding ensuring code compliance, etc., were completed.
Isn't the, don't they, aren't they required to have skirting on?
They are. That's what I didn't, that's what part I don't understand, if the permit is closed for him to have it, then I don't know how they pass final inspections.
I mean, don't they have to be anchored?
They do, they have to be properly anchored, the septic has to be checked and make sure it's hooked up and functioning, and it has to be properly skirted.
Well, then maybe, I think, just make your, whoever's going to make the motion, make the motion that.
I don't know if this is going to be right, but I would like to make a motion that we hold off on granting the division until this house and property building is brought up to code.
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, this permit was issued in 2012, this permit was issued in 2012. I do know that some of the requirements at that time were different than they are now. I cannot tell you when, when the state's requirements changed.
Who made the, no, no, made, no. Did you make a motion?
I did. I made a motion to hold on splitting, or passing the splitting zone for this until this building is brought up to code.
Yes, okay, thank you, thank you. We have a motion on the floor, I need a second.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Gabrielson. Sure.
Second by Walker.
Part of the rezoning process is the notification of neighbors given the opportunity to their input into the issue. And when you have a neighbor that comes forward, that, to me, is very significant because the decision on this property has a major impact on his property, especially if he bought it. I can't speak for the other changes that occurred to the one-acre parcels to the northeast, I believe that.
Yep.
But I have concern with diminishing their value, I mean, we give them the opportunity to come to these meetings and talk, if they come to the meetings to talk, I think that's significant. And for that reason, I'm not going to vote for it, but I felt that that's important. We've got to recognize the input, the impact on the neighbors, as significant as the impact on the property owner.
Yep. Thank you. Any additional questions, comments? Any further discussion?
Can I get a clarification on the motion to hold off until the splits? Are you saying to disapprove at this time?
Yes, I make a motion to disapprove the split on this property and for them to be able to bring this, what they have already existing up to code and come back, see where they're at.
Mr. Chairman.
There's a better way to do that.
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman, staff will note that if the commission recommends to the Board of Supervisors to deny the zoning use permit and the Board of Supervisors upholds the commission's recommendation, it will be six months before the applicant can apply for this request.
So, we can do a sixty or ninety day continuance, which would be the same thing, almost, or we can deny it. I think those are the two choices we have, am I correct?
The maker of the motion needs to make the decision.
Yep.
I'll make a motion to deny at this time.
Okay.
I'll second. Or wait, you have to, you can't do that.
I'll rescind my motion.
Thank you.
And the second has to rescind their.
To upgrade the property and put it on hold and make a new motion to deny this applicant's request.
Okay, go ahead.
And then Commissioner Walker, who seconded that, needs to rescind his second and then second the new motion.
Did you get that, Keith?
Yes, I did, I will rescind my motion, and I'll make a motion on the new motion. Second the new motion.
There you go.
We have a motion to deny by Commissioner Gabrielson, second by Commissioner Walker. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, same sign. Motion is denied. You bet. Item number four.
Item number four is an evaluation of a request for a zoning use permit on assessor's parcel number 306-07174C for an off-premise sign in a C2H-1A general commercial highway one-acre minimum lot-size zone in the Golden Valley vicinity. There is one letter of objection for this item. Staff recommends approval, subject to conditions.
Is the applicant present? Applicant is not present, we have no speakers on the item. Any discussion from the chamber?
That was all for you.
That wasn't me.
It was for you.
They're on hold. Any further discussion?
Actually, yes. Where this one is located, and I mistaken earlier, the other one is down by Cabob Road, okay, that's already erected.
This is right off of A-68.
Yeah, this one's a new one. Letter complaint was visual, the site and where it's at and located. Vacant lot, I don't know, I see the signs going up everywhere and I guess they have a right to do that on vacant property, but some of the signs that are going in are really an eyesore. I've seen two of them right now, and you can see one of them from up on Egar Road, it's that big, that bright, that's, I mean, the other one, as you're coming up the hill toward the highway, is another huge one right there that actually takes and blocks a business. You can't see the business until you're just pretty much past the sign of what it is. I kind of have an issue with all the new signs going in that size that are taking away from businesses and what the businesses that are already there, you know? I'm beeped too. Yeah, I don't know, other thoughts on that? I mean, as far as, you know, I know Kingman's Hall of Signs.
Mr. Chairman, I couldn't agree more, the aesthetics of, I just completed a trip across the country and along 10 and 40 as well, and it's amazing, the number of signs and the impact they have on, on the community. And I just, it's a good idea, but it can be over, overdone. I agree with you.
I know it already has two in place and there's a third one going up by my road. And where this one's going to be located, there is a small business over just to the east of it, and, and if it's going to be as big and obnoxious as the other one, I don't want to see it.
Make a motion.
I make a motion to deny this particular application for the sign and its location.
I'll second it.
We have a, we have a motion by Commissioner Gabrielson, a second by Commissioner Buck. Any further discussion? Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries, motion's been denied. Item number five.
Item number five is an evaluation of a request for a rezone of assessor's parcel number 317-57-001 and 009 from an AR 36A agricultural residential 36-acre minimum lot-size zone to a C2H general commercial highway zone to allow commercial development in the White Hills vicinity. Staff recommends approval, subject to conditions.
Is the applicant present? Okay, we have no speakers on the item, would you like to address the commission?
Just taking a minute here.
Please state your name.
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, good morning, my name is Jamini with Mojave Engineering, applicant for the owner. And we are in favor of the staff recommendations as indicated in the report, and once the rezone is approved, you know, we'll make all the necessary applications required by Mojave County and ADOT for the access permit and all that.
Okay. How close is this? Every time I think of White Hills, I think of Rosie's Cafe. So, how, in relationship to that, where's that at?
I think this is like north of that.
North of that?
Yeah.
Okay.
This is almost directly across from Triangle Airport.
Oh, okay.
You know where that one's at?
Yeah, I know where that's at.
Yeah, it's right.
Okay. Any questions of the speaker? Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you.
There are no additional speakers, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve, based on staff recommendations.
I second. Jones.
Well, thank you, Bob. We have a motion by Commissioner Gabrielson, I mean Commissioner Gordon, and a second by Commissioner Jones. Any further discussion? Those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item number six.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, item number six is an evaluation for a zoning use permit on a portion of assessor's parcel number 336-05-067 to allow for a 60-foot telecommunications tower in an agriculture residential 36-acre minimum lot-size zone in the Meview vicinity. Staff recommends approval, subject to conditions.
Is the applicant present? The applicant is not present, we have no speakers on the item. Any discussion? I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I move we accept per staff recommendations, Bob Jones.
I'll second it.
We have a motion by Commissioner Jones and a second by Commissioner Gabrielson. Any further discussion? Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Item number six passed, item number seven.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, item number seven is a request to rescind and cause property to revert from an agriculture residential 10-acre minimum lot-size zone to the previous zone of agriculture residential 36-acre minimum lot-size for the failure to meet conditions of approval as specified in Board of Supervisors Resolution 2013-095, which conditionally approved a rezone of assessor's parcel number 354-62-007 in the Cedar Hills vicinity. Staff recommends approval of the recension and the reversion to acre, to the prior zone, as stated in the staff report.
Is the applicant present?
Mr. Chairman, the applicant is Mojave County, and yes, we are present.
Thank you. Any questions or comments to the staff? I'll entertain a motion. Yes.
Recommendation that we rescind Board Resolution Number 24.
I move we accept per staff's recommendation, it's Bob Jones.
Go ahead, go ahead.
I'll second, Mr. Jones.
All right, we have a motion by Mr. Jones and a second by Commissioner Buck. We have a motion by Mr. Jones, and a second by Commissioner Buck. Any further discussion? I'll entertain a motion. I mean, vote, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item number seven passed. Item number eight.
Item number eight is an evaluation of a request for recreational vehicle park plan for Phase Two of the Walupi Mountain RV Park. Assessor's parcel number 2042634, lying along Walupi Mountain Road in the Pine Lake vicinity. Staff recommends approval, subject to conditions.
Is the applicant present? Didn't we have this just a few months ago?
It was Phase One.
Or similar one or something?
It was, I think, Phase One.
Phase One was in 2012.
Okay.
Excuse me, Chairman Fuchet?
Yes.
This is Keith Walker. I will be recusing myself from this call.
Oh, okay.
What?
He's refusing the call.
Oh, okay.
Mr. Chairman, if Mr. Walker recuses himself, you do not have a quorum.
Okay, here's my concern. I'm actually putting together a bid on this project, bidding with a couple of general contractors.
We got Mr. Taylor coming.
I believe that Ms., Keith Walker's potential to financially, to gain a financial interest in this would be a conflict, that he should recuse himself.
Okay, then, Mr. Taylor, how do you think we should handle this?
Over 30 days.
I mean, it just...
You still have a quorum, even though he recuses himself from the discussion, doesn't recuse himself from the meeting, so the meeting requirements would be submit. It'd be like a no-bid.
Well, I believe under the conflict statutes that the remaining members, it would be a majority of the remaining members when someone recuses themselves.
Okay, so we're still okay?
Yeah.
Oh, all right. I guess I read something, something different.
I think you're looking for a motion, aren't you?
Yeah, I think I am looking for a motion.
I'll make a motion.
I move that we accept per staff's recommendation. This is Bob Jones.
Mr. Jones, could, can they not hear us?
Go ahead, second.
I'll second that.
We have a motion by Commissioner Jones, and a second by Commissioner Gabrielson. Any further discussion? Those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Good morning.
Good morning, Carl.
Item number nine is an evaluation of a proposed amendment to Section Six and other portions of the Mohave County Land Division Regulations as amended regarding condominium proposals for the unincorporated parts of Mohave County, Arizona. This item is really just to simplify our current process and to come closer into full conformance with state statutes on these types of projects. Staff recommendations, staff recommends that Section Six of the Mohave County Land Division Regulations be struck in its entirety with the section number reserved for possible future use, as shown in Exhibit A.
Has everybody had a chance to review?
Yes.
Yes.
Then I'll entertain a motion.
I move, we accept this per staff's recommendation. This is Bob Jones.
Second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Jones, a second by Commissioner Gordon. Any further discussion? Only, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. We're 10.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Item number 10 is just a discussion item, should the commission wish to so discuss. It is Mohave County zoning ordinance amendments to the planning commission as recommended by the zoning ordinance review committee. It's just here, in case any of the commissioners wish to discuss the amended zoning ordinance drafts that you received last month. These items will go to public hearing on the commission's meeting in September. I will invite also any commissioner that has any questions or comments. Should you find an issue that concerns you next week, please feel free to contact me, by phone or by email.
Any further discussion? No? Okay, well, review it again. Item number 11.
Yes, thank you, Chair Fuchet, members of the commission. Item number 11 is just a quick update of the 25, 2015 general plan review, as well as the progress and the status. As we hit today, today's day 49 of the required 60-day comment period. We currently have received no additional comments via, by phone calls, emails, or posted on our website. We have received word that Northern Arizona University is going to be submitting some comments, but I've yet to speak with the lady yet. Our target for the Planning and Zoning Commission for the final review will be at the August 12, Planning and Zoning Commission meeting, and at that point in time, they will, will be reviewing not only the general plan document, the draft document, also the response to all comments that we have received so far. For today's Planning and Zoning Commission meeting, we just opened it up if you have any questions or more comments from the public. Thank you very much.
Any questions, comments? None? None? Keith, any questions?
I have none. Bob?
Bob, oh, okay.
No.
Either one of you?
No.
Okay. Okay, well, then, we'll just accept those comments that have already been in, and hopefully we get some more. Obviously so. Call the public.
There is no public.
There is no public. It's a bare room. A motion to adjourn.
I move.
Second.
We have a motion to adjourn. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you all.
Thank you.